And I expect we'll have some questions and comments, but before we start, a couple of things. If we can keep the discussion tonight to, say, a half an hour or under, that would be great because we're just going to be getting our first reactions. What I would prefer to do personally is see what you're proposing, but before we say anything substantive, schedule a site walk so that we can go and look at the property, but that's always helpful for us.
Sure. The, what you've seen, you've seen before the overall master plan and probably different earlier packages of it, that they would have had to come through for various considerations of approval and drainage and that sort of thing, but this is the package four, which is the collection of pieces of work that need to be done after the old field school was demolished. And it's the last scheduled and budgeted part of the plan since this began a couple of years ago. So what we're going to do tonight is just give you the overview, as you mentioned, you had a chance to see a little bit of this the other night at the historic mission. This is just to introduce the topic, and of course, we expect to come back later on to the design, but we want to, I think it's important for you to understand what's being proposed in general and what sort of things are being thought about now, and to hear from you, any media reactions you have about questions or issues that we can take into account. We're not really expecting you to approve anything or carte blanche, we're going to take some things to the town. Funding this year to keep this moving is all, but the design will not be finished by then, so we'll have time to shape this and go forward. And I think your idea of the sidewalk is great. So when we did the package four work, that was supposed to have started around November. What happened with this, with the D and B and everybody else, including the weatherman, we weren't able to get rid of the field school until just officially, I think it was yesterday or yesterday, the demolition was finally completed. And so that land is going to be basically contoured back into where it looks like land instead of like a hole in ground. And then this package picks up from where that leaves off. So in the course of dealing with the late start, the plan, we decided parts of the plan are more well baked, and we've eliminated a lot of the ideas, and we kind of have a direction that's kind of got a reverb from what we felt, and that's the hardscape part, which we'll show tonight. That'll be called Package 4A for just for purposes of labeling and greatness. Package 4B, we'll deal with some things that during the course of this work, we found had a lot more room of differing personal opinions and needed actually to profit by having more of the hardscape in place so that people could judge what to do with plantings and sidewalks, the Westman legacy trail, 300 legacy trail, and different kind of site improvements that one might or might not want to put on his property. That's going to probably spread into a lot more public input and wider sort of design. Most of this has been based on originally several hundred people, 200 plus people that were doing focus group input at the time the field school was designed. So it comes with some sort of legs from people identifying issues and problems.
How can you separate the two?
The A and B?
Yeah.
Well, I hope you can see that when we go through the overview of the design, but the package A is made basically just roadways and parking and sidewalks that are related directly to the parking and roadways. And there are not too many degrees of freedom about where we go, and it's largely the circulation that's there today. It's modified in certain significant ways, and you know, Bob Corning from Stantec, Frank Holton from Stantec, will review that with us, and then we can talk about other questions you might have, but we won't necessarily try to cover detail today.
Do you want to talk about the schedule?
Yeah, this is, this is an overview of where we are. We're in the April timeframe, getting ready for the town meeting funding vote. Design will continue, detailed design. Now we're in position to be able to look at the photography and do the surveys that are needed after the old field school is gone, so that will be a May project, sitting in the snows of Oregon. And then in June, we would expect to come to closure on the final design for this particular part of the time four.
So this is just 4A?
4A.
Just 4A.
Yeah.
So you're, I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but you've decided to go ahead with the parking and vehicular aspects of it, but hold off on the other, so what are you going to tell me?
For funding, the design is going on in parallel, but there was a feeling that there needed to be more time for input and design work on the hardscape stuff, and so that's going to not be queued up for town funding requests for the CPC until November. So the design will just have a longer design cycle. The construction of the B part, i.e. the plantings and the other sidewalks and recreational features, would happen then during the spring, summer, fall of 2016.
So I can clarify, so the package four always was comprised of two funding sources, one which was the town funding, which had to do with all the hardscapes, the driveway circulation, curving, drainage, all that. And then there was the CPC funding, which had to do with the pathways, the landscaping, and the accoutrements that were going on the site. So there was always two separate sources, so it's easier for us to break it apart because it's been tracked that way. And what's being presented to you in the various boards around town is the hardscape.
So what are you asking for at town meeting?
In terms of a value or?
Yeah.
One million, three hundred and fifty thousand.
So you're actually going for the 1.3?
Yes.
And that's just for hardscape?
Correct.
So?
So that's for designing and construction?
And that's sort of a piecemeal approach to this project, a whole section of the project.
I would invite you to look at this and see if you really think that way. We think it's, the advantage of doing it this way is it gives people an easier way to visualize what the finished product would look like and to figure out how the other stuff, how much to do with the other hardscape and where to have trails if it's almost too much.
How would they have an idea of what it's going to look like, what is done, if you don't show the other part of it at the same time?
Well, the design will be worked out, this part will be staked out while they're designing the other part, so that people can see.
Well, I understand that from a, you know, from an operational, you know, perspective and from a funding perspective, separating all that out, but from a planning perspective, where you want to see what you're going to get before you start down the road, you want to see where the roads are going to get.
We started that way. We started that way as a joint combined plan, regardless of funding sources, but there was an inescapable feeling of individuals and particularly also the CPC that thought they needed more time in the design cycle for those portions of it. They didn't seem to have any problem themselves about the degree of separation. It's a six-month, six-month window of finishing.
They have a right to their opinion.
No, no, I understand.
Part of the rationale, and we can let Frank, who's our civil engineer, talk to it too,
is that the roadways are going to go where the roadways are going to go, you know, they're lining up with certain existing intersections or driveways, and it's a reconsolidation configuration of the hardscape. So that doesn't have the playful flexibility that hiking trails, landscaping, and benches and things like that do. So that, you know, it's possible to separate them and layer the scheme, but why don't you let the design can present the scheme and ask all the questions?
Well, why don't you present? Yes.
You know, I mean, I think we might as well talk.
It's easier to respond to a plan than to present.
Listen, what you're going to want is planning board support at town meeting, I would assume, as opposed to planning board opposition.
Sure.
So I, I always say, just try to listen to David's comments, my comments, that we tend to look at things as a whole.
That's okay, but I just, could we come back to that point after you see it? Because it may be that.
No, it's fine.
If all we're doing is repaving existing roadways, then that answers part of the question. In fact, we're not far off of that. So I just, in this particular case, let's see if it's still a concern. If it is, we'll talk about what to do with that.
Really, just the other thing that I'll add is that between now and June, when it does go off to bid, we'll be, we'll be designing both packages concurrent to some extent.
You're going to be at town meeting with bid documents already prepared?
No.
Well, okay. So you're going to be able to go from town meeting, which is mid-May, into bid documents and shit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So.
Just thought it'd be good to just to talk about some of the goals that we've been establishing with the committee for the overall project, both 4A and 4B and total package four, real quickly. Obviously, this is a great opportunity to create a really valuable open space for the town, meeting all the needs of the community, but also there's a very diverse set of users for the campus. The historic character is very important on the campus, we want to respect that, enhance it where we can. The tree canopy is incredibly important. We've hired an arborist who's done a very thorough analysis of the existing trees, and he's going to help us not only with trying to improve the existing tree canopy, but work with us on enhancing and creating a new tree canopy that's going to provide the character for the campus moving forward. We want to improve the access to all, to the entire campus for all users. One of the things that's happened so far on campuses, on the campuses, prior to the field school, there was virtually no sidewalks on the campus through the field school and some other site improvements. The connectivity and pedestrian circulation has improved dramatically, so we want to finish that. Organize the vehicular circulation and parking, not only to reduce the congestion, but to provide a safe environment for all the users of the campus. And then it's important that the design is sustainable and we came for the town. So those are some overriding goals that we've been keeping in mind, trying to move the project forward. So this is what is going to exist once the field school is down and the improvements are made, they're associated with the field school project. So the field school is this red outline here. Once that's completed, the spring, the athletic fields are going to be completed, as well as this last bay of parking for the library, I think it's 25 spots, is that correct? That's all going to be done this spring as part of the field school project. So that's what we're really considering as our existing conditions or our base conditions for this project. Some of the issues that are out there now, the existing caselot, which is used by the school department, is a dead end. It's a two-way roadway that accesses a dead end parking lot. There's existing 17 parking spaces, and on a daily basis, there's upwards of between 30 and 40 cars that are trying to use that lot. They park, they overflow onto the grass, which not only disurges the grass, but some of the adjacent canopy trees as well. The existing parking, I should note too, is the pavement goes right up to the face of the building, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. The other area is, which is a great opportunity, is all the existing pavement and parking that was in front of the old field school. It's a great opportunity to create a new open space along the whole front edge of School Street, and that's an important part of the project. There's issues with Alphabet Lane, both at peak times, mostly related to the school, field school drop-off and pickup times. It provides congestion, it backs up, and it basically binds the entire campus. One of the things that's been difficult to assess is the existing field school driveway, which is right here, has been open and closed over the course of a field school, field school construction project, and then mostly closed instantly with the field school demolition. So that hasn't been able to be used as an entrance or an exit like it has been historic, and that's contributed to some of the backup on Alphabet Lane. There's an existing issue related to the field school pickup. Basically, the pickup length isn't long enough, and it backs up on Alphabet Lane, which backs up Alphabet Lane onto the campus. And there's a parking deficiency. There's a number of issues related to both the field school, the community center use, the council of aging programs have grown dramatically, which is required a higher parking demand, and there's a, there's a parking deficiency at peak times on the campus during the day. And then the library approached us about, approached the town committee about doing some improvements to their drop-off and their entrance and exit, which doesn't work, the geometries are weird in that area, and they've asked us to look at modifying that to simplify it and make their drop-off and entrance and exit work better for their use. So those are some of the things that, so the issues that are going to be addressed as part of the proposed plan that we're going to present tonight. So the proposed plan is a new vehicular and parking network. The idea is that the case would be a one-way in, create a new intersection at the community center, and then this roadway would come out to School Street and have parking along it, some very similar to as it does now. One of the things that we've been working very closely with, with the committee and the town, is the location of this driveway exit. Originally, we were proposing there'd be a four-way intersection with the Wellesley and School Street intersection. There were a number of concerns about that, visual, the fact that it would be, there was concern about speed, and this would be a thoroughfare. So we went back to using the existing driveway opening at the field school entrance now off of School Street as the proposed entrance and exit. This project would also, this first phase would also include sidewalks that were associated with the parking, to get you from the parking areas to the various buildings, the community center and the cas house, and then associated lighting and drainage that would be part of the project as well. So this is how it would look once this 4A package was completed, and I'll get into some of the details in a little bit more detail. So looking at the proposed improvements of the parking, this is the existing edge of pavement. We have a significant reduction in impervious area as part of the project. And then I think one of the biggest gestures that we, that we're really, I think is a great benefit to the plan, is pulling the pavement away from the cas house on both sides to give the cas house a much better presence, provide the opportunity to get more landscape and green space around the perimeter of the cas house.
Where's the boulder?
The boulder is right above here. So a lot of this area here is the existing field school parking and pavement, and pavement. There's a loop road, a parking that comes behind the cas house here. So we're trying to consolidate the paving and the parking and reduce the amount of overall impervious. These two lots currently have about 56 cars, including the lots in front of the field school. As proposed, it's about 79, so there's an increase of 23. So one of the changes that we're proposing is that the existing entrance at the cas house lot off of Wellesley Street, which is currently serves, actually is two-way, we're proposing there will be a one-way in. The existing opening between the piers is 15 feet, it currently acts as a two-way, which isn't really wide enough for two-way, but it acts as two-way now because it's a dead end lot. And we're proposing to keep this opening just as it is, not to, not to touch the width of the piers or any of the landscape around it. And it would be a one-way in. The rest of the circulation would all be two-way to provide flexibility depending on where you're going and where you're coming from, what entrance or what exit you use. There'd be a new three-way stop at this location to provide traffic calming and safety for pedestrian crossings. This is, this walkway here was done as part of an earlier package, and it connects now over to the community center. So this pedestrian connection would come across the roadway here and then come across the roadway here to provide a pedestrian connection through there, so the stop signs would, would help with pedestrian safety as well. One of the issues with this, and one of the concerns that was raised is increasing the traffic flow in front of the community center, particularly with the users of the lower level of the community center. So we propose some modifications to this area to help with traffic calming and to help regulate the circulation through this area. So this is the existing condition in this area now, there's an opening now that goes into the field parking, field school parking area here. This bay is currently designated for COA use, existing. There's a limited mobility parking here, and then these are the existing handicapped space and additional parking for the community center use. So one of, there's a number of things that we're proposing to do. One is to close off this intersection here, so that would provide a few new parking spaces here, but it would also allow or force people to use this route instead of cutting through in this direction here. It'll also potentially improve the drop-off situation at the field school. There is an existing stop line here, adding a stop sign. Currently, this crosswalk is stamped asphalt, looks like a cobble type product, and this is just striped, so we're proposing that that would be enhanced to be a more visual crosswalk. And then the idea of adding a stop line and a stop sign at this location here as well. So really trying to promote traffic calming, slow movement through the campus.
Could you go back?
Sure.
So if people, if people come or go into the community center and all the parking spaces above the, you know, the lower part of the picture are taken, and those, you come up to that stop sign and?
You park here.
All right, so the one-way.
It's two-way.
It's two-way.
This section of the lane is two-way.
Okay, great.
So this is what I was talking about with the crosswalk, this is the existing crosswalk at Alphabet Lane, it connects to a sidewalk, but this is just painted, so we're proposing that that would be improved to increase visibility.
So really, there's going to be a lot of new traffic right by the lower entrance, which is the council of aging.
Go around that corner, yeah.
Yeah. Those people move slowly.
Yeah, it leaves more so than it is now. This is just a reversal of the pattern that used to be there. There used to be traffic through there, but.
So this is, this graphic is starting to show what our thought is, like during pickup at the field school. So the pickup would queue up here, and then you would queue here, and then queue up, and then however long it would need to be, so that there were intervals where people were required to stop before they moved on to the next step.
So that's queuing for parents picking up children at the field school, not necessarily driving them to the community center.
That's correct.
In front of the community centers are queuing up?
Not necessarily what.
I was just, go ahead.
I dismissed what you said.
I was just, the, the traffic that's queuing up on the right-hand side of the divider is all parent pickup.
Yes.
Of children. And then, and then they're not necessarily going to the community center, they're going out Alphabet Lane most likely.
In this display, and that is.
Yep.
And then there's also going to be, you know, people coming in this way, Alphabet Lane, to get into this queue as well.
Yeah.
And that's going to be subjecting to some discipline on the part of the schools. They haven't managed this kind of thing before. They've got a place for the queue, they can usually get people to follow, but if the parents don't like the way there's some bad interactions along this.
I'm going to ask the obvious. We, we have a public busing system in Weston. Does no one use it?
Well, yeah, they, they do, and that's dropped off on the other side of the building, so it doesn't interact with this fortunately, but you're onto a point that a bunch of us have scratched our heads about, how do you increase?
How do you increase? I mean, certainly making pickup that much easier.
It's taking, I'll tell you, the bus, I was talking to a mom the other day, and it was taking an hour and 25 minutes for their kid, who lived on the south side to get home.
Part of that is because they get tied up in this traffic thing that we're unraveling.
They run so late, like. Because everybody's traffic is.
Her bus doesn't sometimes come until like 3:30, 3:40, she's out of school too.
I think this is, you should probably.
Yeah, go ahead.
Wait for our comments.
We're going to shake our.
It should be noted too, that this is for 10 or 15 minutes.
That's right. This is really severe backup, picking up about twice a week for 10 or 15 minutes, so this isn't the way it's going to be all day long, every day, so.
Well, I know that, but it's just, seems like so much is driven for 10 or 15 minutes twice a week. So much change and hardscape and.
Well, that, that traffic exists, that pattern has always existed to provide access, just it hasn't accommodated the queue before.
So I mentioned the improvements at the library entrance, so right now, the red is the existing edge of pavement, and there's a number of issues, it's very awkward movement to get through and around this drop-off and back out. The library asked us to try to regularize this, so basically what we're proposing is a 24-foot driveway, a two-way driveway, and then cutting off the end of the existing island, so that there's a straight passage through and really ease and regularize the drop-off area at the library.
Does that change though, the actual drop-off into the library? Don't they have? Is that the way it is right now, right?
The dark, the dark color is where the pavement would change from existing. This is what exists now. So instead of a, it's almost 50 feet wide from curb to curb, outside a curb to outside a curb, and just the new driveway would be 20. So one of the other pieces of the project that's been contemplated and is currently being proposed is the intersection of Wellesley and School Street. If you all remember, so this intersection here, if you all remember, this is what was proposed for the Newton, Wellesley and School Street intersections a number of years ago, and was voted down by the town, but part of that project, aside from the rotary, was the improvements, the regularizing of the intersection, the squaring off of the intersection at Wellesley and School in that location. So that's being proposed as part of this project, and it does a couple of things. It slows traffic up down School Street, provides a much safer pedestrian crossing across Wellesley Street. The, one of the, one of the concerns or one of the issues that the schools on the, on the campus have had is student access over the landscape. And there's really not a great, safe or direct route to get from the campus over there, so this would help that, the safer crossing here, a much shorter crossing. And then the other reason is with this driveway location being proposed here on School Street, having traffic slow to make this right-hand turn and actually have to use your blinker to use that right-hand turn would make exiting out of this, particularly for left-hand turns obviously, a much safer. Another part of the project that's being proposed is improvements to the case parking lot, which was done last year. Currently, there's, there's two, two different areas. One is a drive-through aisle that's permeable pavement with gravel, gravel paved product, which is the parking base, and then this was meant to be overflow parking, it's just grass now. Because of the use of the campus, because of the increased parking demand, there is a need for year-round permanent parking on the campus. So we've looked at two different options, and we could do either or both of these. One would be to actually replace the gravel paved parking bays with the permeable asphalt to make those a permanent parking situation, but then also to use a permeable pavement product and pave the lawn areas as well. Another opportunity is, one of the things that was talked about in the committee last week was creating a new driveway entrance here from these parking bays and eliminating this one. So basically, you'd be moving this down to this location that would provide an easier access to and in and out of the parking areas, but it would also potentially provide an opportunity to increase the drop-off queue, pickup queue, so you could actually go like that. You could actually queue in that parking lot as well as another opportunity as well.
So you're saying what was built a year ago already doesn't work?
It works.
Needs to be redesigned.
Well, it works. The problem with this area here is that it's not, it's not able to be used year-round because they haven't been able to plow it.
It's more than gravel, it has some plastic features in it, and when it freezes up and they try to plow it, it will rip it out. Let me just add a little bit about this, a little bit of background on this, because it was in the mind of the original design that this would be overflow parking, all of it would be for big events and things. And during the course of the project, council and aging's been on their growth path, we've had to, we shifted some of the parking that field school was originally allocated to have, away from that basic field school parking lot into that so-called temporary lot, which has to run nine months a year now, and a third of that's what we just went through. And the council aging probably going to continue to grow in terms of their need for parking and need for programs and the like. So, so it's been a tough cultural shift, but the way I see it is all that parking that we thought was temporary, it really needs to be finished for, some of it will be used regularly, particularly the part on the right, with faculty from the field school and overflow from country, if it is needed. The part on the left might be still partially overflow parking, but as grass, it's not as serviceable and pliable either given the weather. So that's kind of, this whole ball moved on us during the course of the master plan in terms of the demand for growth.
Just, Frank's going to talk really quickly about some preliminary thoughts about drainage.
Okay. Frank Holton, Stantec. And the four shaded areas you see here are represent the areas that water is draining to, so watershed areas or subcatching areas.
Currently?
Current, in the existing condition, yes. So this red area is a portion of the case driveway that is draining out towards Wellesley Street. The blue area is the area that just sheets off, there's a low point in the wooded area and approximately this area, where that pavement just sheets off into that lower area and is just retained and infiltrates. The yellow area drains through existing drain, and it's on the campus currently. The yellow area drains through existing drain and is on the campus currently. There's catch basins, drain manholes and piping, and it's draining all of that area in this general direction, eventually discharging towards wetlands.
That link doesn't exist right now. The yellow, that, the yellow link doesn't exist, right?
It does, that's correct. So what the, what these shaded areas are really representing, they're the limits of the existing pavement, but they, they also do include the new pavement as well. And the purple area that's shown here, this is currently draining in this direction. I'll show a photo in a minute. We think some of this water might be retained on-site in the soil, but generally, this area is draining out towards School Street. So with the improvements of, sorry, I didn't realize what was next, but this, this illustrates what I was mentioning. A lot of degrading towards Wellesley Street and School Street looks like this in the existing condition. There's a stone wall, there's landscaped areas, and then the landscaped area sort of grades to what looks like a low point and then grades up towards the stone wall. So some of the stormwater that flows off the paved areas is probably being retained and infiltrating in those areas.
But we don't see it pouring over the stone wall.
No, it, it probably is retained there and then there's also probably a grade that is towards the outlet.
There were two for two schools.
But some of that water is probably being retained into the soil. So here, what we're showing, and I think you could probably realize from the previous slides, it's really making the pavement more efficient while increasing the amount of parking spaces, but the amount of impervious area that's draining towards Wellesley Street into the existing drainage system on campus, and most significantly, what's draining out towards School Street is being reduced. And again, really towards School Street is being reduced very significantly in terms of the impervious area. There's a slight increase in the amount of impervious area that's draining towards the low point, but it's only about 800 square feet, and that's, that represents about 1,000 gallons during a hundred-year storm event, so it's, it's not a lot of water, and that low area has capacity to take that additional flow. So we're reducing the amount of impervious area, which means the rate of runoff, the volume of runoff will be reduced. We would try to incorporate law and pack development techniques where we could, especially in the, in the blue area and in the purple area, try to retain water on-site, infiltrate it into the ground. Where the curb cuts meet Wellesley and School Street, we would envision putting in catch basins so that we don't have water sheeting out to the street, which it does in the current condition, and connect those catch basins into the existing drainage systems in those streets. And the yellow area, which is where water is generally draining into existing infrastructure on-site, I think all we really need to do there is just adjust the location of catch basins and just continue to discharge into the existing drainage systems. And in the blue area, we would also want to incorporate law and pack development techniques, but we are aware, we recognize that there are some significant trees right along the edge of that existing pavement that will be a challenge and, you know, we'll just wanna protect those and we won't be wanting to do a lot of excavation that might disturb the root systems of those trees.
You have to be careful also protecting the water course.
Correct, so.
Also on the School Street in the front there, where there's some other significant trees that you want to retain.
Right.
Not damage those.
And what we're doing, and I apologize, this shot, this slide, it would have been good if we could see the proposed conditions a little bit more clearly through the shading, but we're really pulling the edge of the pavement further away. So in this case, this shaded area, this is the edge of the existing pavement. The, the new edge of pavement is gonna be further inboard, so it's actually, it is gonna give us some room in that area to, to do some, some things there with infiltration trenches or bio retention basins. It's gonna be a little bit more challenged on this edge.
So will those new catch basins you mentioned on School Street catch the 10,000 proposed or does that still go out of the School Street?
It's reducing the pavement, I think that's what we're saying.
Well, there's still, there still will be 10,000 or almost 11,000 square feet that will be draining in this direction towards School Street. We will direct as much as that we can to the edges, to infiltration trenches, bio retention basins, but ultimately, there will be water that will go out to the street. Right now, it just sheets onto the street with no control, and so our plan would be to put some catch basins there so that we can collect it, control it, and then connect to the existing drainage system in the street.
But even with the catch.
On the street and the driveways?
It does.
Right, so that's where you put your catch basin, at the end of the driveway?
Right, right, yes, exactly.
Even with those catch basins, you still have 10,000 going into the street. They don't catch that 10,000. As you said, they're right at the entrance, right at the street.
Right, but the grades are all towards that area, so that they, they would pick up whatever water flows in that direction.
Not all that water flows out there, right? Somebody goes into the berm.
Yeah, somebody goes into the berm and, you know, during heavy, heavy storms, probably some that is just sheeting up to the street.
Yeah, trees are happy to handle it.
Yes.
Me, is it a big problem today? I, I don't remember seeing School Street flooded or anything.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a problem, but it's, generally, you, you don't want water sheeting across the sidewalk or onto a street in the offsite. It could be an icing problem.
You're still gonna get, you know, maybe not 10,000, but several thousand gallons square feet running across the sidewalk. You're not gonna stop all of it.
Well, we're gonna have a lot less going there than the proposed condition than what goes there now. We're reducing it by about 60%.
Yeah.
Not aware that it's been a problem, you know, a flooding problem.
I'm not aware it's a problem either, but we're gonna be improving what's, it's gonna be less water going to the street.
Much of a problem.
Than what, than what goes there now.
Much of a nightmare.
And so overall, what we have is the total impervious area from the shaded areas we've been talking about, about 51,000 square feet. We're gonna be reducing that to about 38,000 square feet. So it means less water going to the streets, it means more infiltration. And then the other area at the entrance of the library, it was evident, I think from the slide that Bob showed earlier, that we're making a significant reduction in the amount of impervious area in that area, too, a lot of which also sheets out towards School Street. So we have, you know, the deep, the final details of the drainage design aren't developed yet, but those are the concepts that we're working with. We wanna use all of that development, and we wanna utilize the existing drainage in this area on the site to the extent that.
Well, you're gonna have something that our civil engineer can take a look at.
Well, it should, I would think over the next few weeks, we're gonna have designs on plans that, that we could start to review with the civil engineer.
So not before town meeting?
Town meeting has the middle of the bank. We could have a meeting with him to review, you know, what we have before town meeting.
Are you looking to get design approval at town meeting or just funding approval?
Construction funding. Funding, funding for construction.
So.
Which doesn't obviate going through the normal process in town for approvals.
But, but the town meeting does not have to vote on the design?
Yeah, in a general way, but not at the level that you would.
No, but like the configuration, the general configuration. So that will be presented at town meeting and voted upon.
That's right.
This is what you can assume is gonna be built. I think that's what, I think that's why, isn't it?
Well, the, the committee of 20, three-plus people that have been working this up and taking all the input, this is what they approve to go forward.
That was in our presentation.
And this gentleman is on that committee, so he can talk to that.
Yeah.
But I seriously feel the ship, the whole thing should be reviewed from the form of traffic and parking and everything else.
That's a fair question. Has there ever been parking studies done? There've been, or has there ever been recent parking data?
I don't know the name of the gentleman, but he did traffic counts.
He's a StanTech employee.
So it's a, so StanTech Engineering, not, not, so it's, is it a traffic engineer on StanTech?
Yes.
We still need our own, we need a separate set of eyes, just because I think that you're gonna get a lot of interesting comments at town meeting of the way that traffic is set.
I think one of the, one of the things that has happened is a little of this has been a phase in, the construction going on at the Woodland School, it's deprived it of some parking. And so there are some uncertainties about how parking's working, but right now, the reality is that the queuing is a disaster.
Yeah.
And they're looking for some relief from that, and part of the extra parking in the back is to accommodate that.
I'm not so much concerned about the parking in the back, I mean, but I am concerned about the parking and pavement that you can see from the street. Or, you know, I would, this is why it's really nice to see the, everything together rather than, you know, it's, like, having the vehicular traffic drive the bus. And, you know, the, just focusing on the, on the entrance to the Case House parking area, that whole paved area is moving down the hill. So you'll, you'll see the parking area, right now you see landscaped area, instead you'll see asphalt.
Actually, what you see today, and today's a good example, like, you had 18 cars parked on the lawn there, along that roadway.
There may be a problem with the parking accommodation for the Case, for that, for that, for the Case House. Does that mean that that's the solution to the parking problem? To, I mean, you have to forgive me.
I understand, I understand your question.
I, I have to ask a question, you know.
That's fine. One of the, one of the thoughts behind this particular parking configuration, and it doesn't mean exactly which foot it occupies with this concept, was that you can come in and be at the rec center or community center activity, and if it's busy and overflow, you can come around into the Case lot and use that, and vice versa. If you're at a Case House affair, which has, you know, 30 or 40 people at it, then you fill that lot up and go around the other way. So it, it takes some of the parking load off and takes some of the pavement out of it, but your, your concern is that it's still leaving some of it too close to the roadway.
Well, you know, I'm just, it's shoved down to the, to the roadway. Why not move it back up, you know, away from the wrong way, as long as it's all strung out along the roadway anyway?
It's a great, it's a great question, I think, to jump in and answer, if the two trees, Bob, when you highlighted the two trees just north of that, yeah, those two are there.
Not that part, the other part.
Which way would you want to push them?
That way.
Uphill, up, just.
Well, I'm just, I don't.
Oh. You're talking about going towards Alphabet Lane. One of the things that exists is a couple of areas we cannot do construction in because of agreements made when the, when, when the community center was put in there with the neighbor, gemmatics. Yeah, so there's, there's better ideas about how to do all this, but we can't do them. That geography's taken away from us by those agreements that somebody made there.
Al, I was advocating actually getting rid of the roadway and just have parking there, but that was not a popular idea.
Well, I, that's another question.
And then which roadway?
I can just see cars maneuvering all over that spaghetti.
The Case entrance?
You really need to, that's too much to do.
So the concept was to, so that it was a one-way to get in, if it were, was full, you could go around and then to follow.
You'd have to go in and turn around in the parking lot, and that's the effort to do it best. Yeah, right. None of the users of that area favored that, I think, to use that on a daily basis, but I do understand the reason for your bringing that up.
The advantage that I saw is definitely pulling the pavement away from the house because it, it basically kisses the house right now, and I like that disadvantage.
That, that might help. We're not gonna redesign the parking lot, you know, from scratch now, but this is the, this is the conundrum, that, you know, this is what we do, and on a weekly basis, this is what we do, but we're, what I, the sense I have is that it's this or that's it, you know, or nothing.
Well, one of the things, you know, I, I understand that, one of the, one of the issues we're left with is that this planning was not done when it was decided in somebody's infinite wisdom to put all these buildings on this small area with all the septic load and everything else. We're happy to make the best of that, and these restricted agreements about where you can't build, and the trees that we wanna preserve, and the buildings we wanna highlight that are historic. It, it, it's not easy to come up with a whole array of things appropriate to choose from and still have it function. It's gotta function, really. I don't think the town decided to crowd all these in here so that they would be a problem, you know, daily functioning. So we're just trying to find that best-fit compromise, and it's not easy.
I mean, I've been there in the middle of the day recently, and it's, it looks like a, it's like a shopping center parking lot. It's, it's the most astonishing thing in the middle of Weston to see these, all the cars scrambling around, and all the connections aren't made yet. I can see somebody who wants to get into the queue as opposed, instead of going down Alphabet Lane, they come in off Wellesley Street.
Hang a right.
And then cut down, hang a right, and now they're in the middle of the queue. I mean.
Falls into the overflow parking.
All kinds of optional places where people could go to.
Well, the, the way that that's, if I understood your direction there, there's gonna be a couple of places where the queues can converge, and there's stop, stop signs. So the normal common courtesy is to kinda alternate a stop sign, so we hope that prevails, recognizing what I'm saying.
But don't you, you see what I'm saying? You know, people are gonna be looking for shortcuts because they always, so every time you make a link, you've made a shortcut. So how, how is the traffic, if I were trying to pick up my kid, as opposed to following the queue all the way around the corner on Alphabet Lane, I'd go up School Street, Wellesley, zip in behind the Case House, come back and come into the middle of the queue that way.
Well, that's where the actual queue would be.
Yeah, I know, but.
Not on the Alphabet Lane.
Well, your diagram showed the queue actually going up Alphabet Lane, the initial one with the, with the yellow.
That was, that was the conditions, that's the only choice there is, yeah. But, but in this plan, they would come in, they, they used to do the reverse. When the Field School was up near School Street, they'd come in the back and come around front. Now we're saying that's, you just reverse that, so we know how long the queue is, we know that distance has worked before, and the issue is making sure that if there is a place where murders happen, that it's orderly and safe, and try to also establish behaviors that work for the parents picking up as well.
The other thing that worries me is that the, the curves are so gentle that people are gonna be encouraged to sorta go fast, you know, through the roadways to get, you know, let's say you do wanna get to the Field School and you're on Wellesley Street. You'd have a, a temptation to zip through.
You have to go through two stop signs.
You know, stop signs. You know, this is a driveway. I mean, it's essentially a driveway, but now we're making it into an entire road system of stop signs and crosswalks and.
Well, the reason we have to do that is because of the council I A D would say the issues.
And I'm not saying that this isn't maybe the ultimate design, but you're asking the planning board to go basically quietly to town meeting.
And say, yes, indeed.
Our tacit approval, and it could literally be this horrific mess, so I'm just, somebody needs building suspenders. I need, I need our traffic consultant to look at it and say, this is the best that we can do. That's what I need.
I'm, I'm in no way addressing that, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just saying that this thing isn't.
But it doesn't give us any time.
Well.
And he's giving you time, and this is made for.
What you could, I don't mean to tell you what to do, but one of the things you could say is you could say, you know, we understand this is a tough situation to sort out, but we want our traffic engineers to look at it, and that's gonna happen later, and we expect this process to rationalize any of the traffic findings that come up. I mean, I, I don't think that's unreasonable. Yeah, yeah, it's a qualified, it's, you know, and I'm not saying my words were right, but I mean.
Right, right, I get what you're saying.
Well, that's what you'd like us to do, and it, I'll have to think hard, long and hard about that.
That's fine, I'd just like you to go as far as you're comfortable with it, but the main thing is we need to start the dialogue now because, you know, then there'll be other times where we'll have more detail to share, you know, more specific concerns, questions and input.
One thing that I'm concerned about, there are two, I mean, there are actually two as, parallel asphalt roadways going on there. There's one going one way into the campus from Wellesley Street, and then there's one going one way out of the campus. I mean, the roadways are actually beginning to double up.
Your traffic issue will probably tell you, you need two ways in and two ways out of the campus, and that's the only way to do that. That is the only way to do that.
Yeah.
Again, we're, we're using kind of existing roadways. We're not just wholesale starting from scratch and going through vertical. So, you know, that, not only because, well, there's no, we should do it probably, but it's also respectful of vegetation, so. But I, I welcome them to look at it, I mean, I don't think there's any problem with that at all.
I know how hard this is, this is, with so many existing problems.
So one of the interesting findings from the traffic engineer was he, he did a count of lefts and rights coming off Alphabet Lane onto Wellesley Street. And we were asking, what's the percentage left to right? And he said, well, actually, it's, it's skewed heavily toward going left.
It was somewhere in the order of seventy to eighty percent, but he said there's a small time, about fifteen minutes in the morning at a peak time, where suddenly you get more people turning right.
And we're talking into the upper.
From Alphabet Lane.
And they're turning right going down Wellesley Street.
Right, going left or right onto Wellesley Street.
But going right down Wellesley Street in the morning is not a problem.
Of course.
But getting yourself into that traffic.
Right, well, this, this is what the traffic review revealed, that, oh, it got so bad, in other words, that people were forced to take a right.
And then go down and pull into somebody's driveway.
Pretty much.
Yeah, Diana?
Have you guys looked at changing it, like having it go in that way as opposed to out?
On Alphabet Lane?
No, well, yeah, on that end of Alphabet.
Yeah, we've just looked at, there's real problems at the other end for coming out.
This is one way in?
That's one way in, so you have to reverse the whole thing, and we did look at that way back when, before we started work, at the earlier phases on Alphabet Lane. There's no sight lines, you're too close to Route twenty, a bunch of things that traffic people found were not good about that. It's down the hill, so you can't really see what's coming up, but.
To make that work, you had to have a traffic light, because you're coming up with Steven Bankman with a sharp curve to your left, so there's no way to sight.
Otherwise, it's not really a good idea.
So, I have some things to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, did, did you say that, that people picking up for the field school are, are going to be told to come in this way and not to do Alphabet Lane?
No, that's one option.
There's two options.
There's two options, but.
Really, three if you use this one as well.
Right, okay, but you're not saying that, that, you're not telling them not to use Alphabet Lane?
Well, if, if, if they do, and if you're using this other queuing mechanism, they're gonna come together at the, at a point there where they enter the parking lot from Alphabet Lane. If that doesn't work smoothly, we're gonna have backup again, back to the problem we're trying to solve. So, if we assume that enough people, if they'll interleave and be friendly about it, you have to park, you have to, on the right-hand side of Alphabet Lane and stop traffic until you can turn left across it. That's, that's where the problems start today, so we're thinking that the best, the best way to avoid that is to bring the queue in from School Street, or for the field school only. And then not encourage it.
I thought that was one way out.
No.
What about the case house?
Case house.
This is one way in.
It's not just one way in.
This is two-way.
That's two-way?
Yeah. Well.
So you have two ways out, two ways in essentially.
I know what I'm gonna say is controversial, but I just think this whole thing is a disaster, especially right here. And, you know, the queuing and encouraging cars to not go out Alphabet Lane, but to go out this way. I mean, what I would like to see, and maybe it's unrealistic, but I wouldn't want there to be any connection from here to here. I, I would, I would close this whole thing off, and, and which would force more kids to take the bus. And they, the cars could only go out this way, and, and these driveways would only be for people using the case house and the community center. Because now I feel like you're just encouraging all sorts of alternatives, and you're basically building a whole street system inside of our, you know, precious case estates. For me, it's just like wrong, it's just totally wrong.
The one, just the one, just to make sure everybody's clear, you know, from a vehicular circulation standpoint, really the only change is this connection right here. I mean, obviously, obviously the parking is being modified and stuff, but from a vehicular circulation standpoint, the only, the only change is this connection, so this, this already exists.
Well, that, like Al said, that's a big one, but, but just because it's the way it is now doesn't make it right. And I, I would want to go to the extreme of discouraging more people to drive, to take and pick up their kids to school. They should be taking the bus. And, and like someone said, we shouldn't be designing this whole case estates, which, which the town has spent a fortune on for those fifteen minutes in the morning and the afternoon, when, when the kids are being.
Well, if, if, let me follow that, let's turn that around. If, if in fact this is basically what exists today, and we spruce it up so it works for those fifteen minutes twice a day, that's, that's small potatoes compared to this fixing up what exists. That's not, that's not driving the whole plan out, that's just something we can take advantage of as we redo it. What we really wanted to do, one of the ideas was to, was to actually take this, this is, this is two-way up to here. Originally, we thought we might bring it two-way out further, but that moves a huge historic rock wall at great expense. And it also creates more traffic problems out here. So, if you could take this out to the two-way part, then you would avoid this whole area. And, and we ran into those restrictions that the town agreed to when they built the, the community center, they kept us from entertaining that, so. We, we can't ignore the, the traffic congestion in the center part, that delays the buses, it goes against trying to get bus usage.
But aren't you just creating more chaos by providing more options? Isn't it, wouldn't it be better to limit what people can do?
Absolutely, and, and what, and what they've done before with Field School is they've closed certain, certain parts of the day, and direct the traffic route. I think the same kind of thing has to be done with this, I don't think we should allow an equal option to come in on Alphabet Lane the other way. If it goes this way, that's the new queuing way.
What is the objective? What, is the objective to eliminate the queuing, or to accommodate the queuing?
No, no, the queuing has to, to accommodate the queuing in a way that doesn't grind the entire campus to a halt back where the country and woodland converge.
Well, it can't be, it can't grind to a halt forever, how long does it grind to, it won't, it doesn't actually grind to a halt, because eventually it clears out.
It grinds to a halt.
For how long?
It grant, well, it doesn't, too much matter if you can't get an ambulance through there. It, it, what happens is right in here, people will come up here, back up this queue and block this road. So one of the behaviors is some people decide to come on the wrong side of the road, or the two-way road, and deal with their thing that way. And it's hazardous, because nobody's expecting traffic coming behind you.
So they're disobeying the traffic issue?
Absolutely.
Just have somebody there to stop them and give them a ticket.
Well, or you could make it work so you don't need a policeman, and that's the idea behind this plan. But this stuff here stops buses from woodland, stops buses from country, and gets those intermixed in.
What makes you think this is gonna cure the queuing problem? It just feels like chaos.
It doesn't cure the queuing problem, it keeps it, what it does is, it'll keep it on the right-hand side of the road as it comes in here. On the right-hand side of the road here, the right-hand side of the road here, any traffic coming from lower campus can, this will be an open shot for buses and cars. And then this, when the pickup leaves here, you have a choice of joining that traffic in when you get a left-hand turn, or you can go back down right to the circle and go to the country school or the woodland school.
The whole plan basically is trying to cure an earlier mistake.
No, it's not. Well, if, if you mean by putting the, all these buildings in this campus, yeah.
No, I mean, who, I remember when the original scheme was presented, and the question of whether there was enough space for queuing was, was one of the first questions people asked, and the answer was absolutely there's enough space for queuing. There wasn't. So, so now, a lot of the.
That's a fair point.
Well, a lot of the solutions are fixing what was an initial miscalculation in the first place. And excuses for being skeptical, but we, you know.
All I can say is, we've used that same stretch of road to queue for Field School before, same number of students, same number of parents, we're reversing the queue. It's an awkward traffic thing there, we tried to avoid that, every which way we can, because we knew that would be an issue, but we couldn't, because of the restrictions of, all the restrictions that exist in that area, couldn't find a way around.
Do you have a need besides the, the field school, when you ask what's driving it, is trying to provide parking for the case house and pull the asphalt away from it, and then also get the parking that the community center can use that's currently close to the scenic roadway, and pull that back up away from the roadway, and get it closer to the buildings that, you know, where the people would be taking.
If, if you make the change in the, what was to be the, another, by the way, miscalculation, the temporary parking lot next to the school, so that you're queuing through that, does that obviate the need for this backdoor access to the queue? If you, or if you've introduced that much more queuing split?
So, what Al's talking about is, is letting cars come in this way, go around this, going up here, down here, and doing this.
Does that obviate the need for the backdoor access to the queue, but through the?
Meaning, could you close this off?
Well, the council and A D folks are not gonna like that being closed off, because they go in there and they park their, part of their parking's on the other side of that. But, so, but, yeah, that might be a queuing thing that would work, but the issue that's been found that was, that was with that is first of all, you're, you're having a queue in a parking lot, so that if anybody's trying to get out of there, that's a little tougher than on the roadway, where there's a little more room for backing out.
I'm not too concerned with what's tougher, at this point, but.
Put a stoplight.
What, I'm sorry?
The stoplight down there. If you put the stoplight down there, then all of this stuff is gonna go back to the queue.
So, that, that's something you try, one of the, as I started to say, one of the, one of the problems with queuing in the parking lot is, is you're gonna have to have somebody there at s reaction. Because people are gonna bypass that and go up Alphabet Lane and cut the queue off.
This is two-way.
One-way.
This is one-way in.
Today it's two-way.
Right, but right now, you're talking about one-way in. Well, this one, this one is two-way.
No, not quite as much as you indicated was one-way, just the entrance on the case lot.
Turns two-way at the intersection, David.
The parking lots you can get into from the other side.
All of a sudden, now it's two-way.
Okay, so.
We showed it, we showed it as two-way.
We showed it as two-way.
So, one-way in, parking lot's two-way.
Let me start, let me start over, people might be driving in this way. People may be driving in this way.
Correct.
People will be coming around Alphabet Lane. You're gonna have three sources of people queuing into the, into the field school. It's gonna be, that's gonna be.
Disaster.
Exactly.
That's gonna be it. You'll have three different, you'll have three lines of traffic queuing into one lane.
We can discourage the Alphabet Lane traffic to come into the queue by blocking it or the queues.
That's the one I wanna encourage.
But that's also a council and A D interest to their parking, so you could, you know, you have somebody to put that up and.
So, I, I think that working, your, your quick solution to deal with queuing, like even before the end of the school year, is signs and, and personnel to queue people through here.
Who's gonna do that?
Well, the school.
Why would this, why should the school, why should the principal have to go out and make parents behave in a certain way? Why, you know, this is a school.
Why should the principal pay this, what else is mistaken there?
I mean, well, they have police to run or.
We need to have a little traffic guard, you know.
We tried to hire, we tried to hire a traffic guard for the middle school connection, and we couldn't find one.
I was, when I was in grade school, I had my call with the old.
So, one more, one more question. Today, they can come in this way and do just what you're describing.
Right.
So how does this fix anything?
Well, today they can't, because that's been disabled.
No, no, but they could before that was closed off.
Right, right.
So how does it, that's the question.
Has it ever been used this way before, was closed off?
No, just because the, the theory was to try to stay out of the council and A D and use Alphabet Lane to do that, the Alphabet Lane idea hasn't worked. So, that was set up to use Alphabet Lane to begin with.
Well, you understand what you're hearing out here with us is what you're gonna get at town meeting too.
Yeah.
Because when people talk about traffic, they all know this.
I, I feel a little leery about going to town meeting with things.
Do you have to go for the whole one point three?
Well.
What if you go for part of it, what if you go for the library part, or?
No, the, the library would be the part I wouldn't do. That's not hurting anything, that's not interacting with anything else, it's nicer and better, but, and it serves the library to these, but it doesn't help the campus congestion in fact at all.
Well, I just think if you, if you connect these two other roadways into that, you're gonna be just, you're gonna, it's gonna create a big mess for it. I, I have to see what our, our, I have to see what an independent traffic is all.
And you're risking a complete turn-down.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the five of us are gonna turn it down, and that might be indicative of what's gonna happen at town meeting.
And even if we say we give tacit approval, we haven't really seen the full plans yet, I mean, there are people in town who are really gonna argue with us. And, 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 and if possibility exists, you get nothing.
Well.
Look what, look at the buzzsaw that the, that the roundabout got, and that was the five hundred thousand dollar cost.
That's much more straightforward than this.
I would've thought so too, actually. So has I, I was on the committee that suggested.
I mean, I think that the idea of.
Yeah, sometimes you just slam.
I think the idea of opening up the parking lots at the top and using that to expand your, your pickup and to just use Alphabet Lane and not all of these other connections.
Well, you're gonna have to do something with this other connection anyway.
The only new, the only new connection, other than getting rid of a bunch of tarmac and parking that was out here, the only new connection is this, is this piece right here?
No, I know that, but.
So how are we making a total mess of things by, by just making this parking work better?
Because you said, number one, they're not even using it right now, so you don't really know how it's gonna. I thought you said that, that it's been closed off, off of School Street, and that.
We're not using it for queuing.
Right.
Because the queuing design was to come back in here and do this.
Right, but that's what we're, the disaster is.
That's where the disaster is, is that.
Right.
The road was shut down for the month of March, and up until this week, so about six weeks.
They were just learning with that disaster and.
Were trained to use Alphabet Lane, so, you know, as far as enforcement goes, you know, they tried to get everyone to use Alphabet Lane.
But have they, but they've never used this other.
When the school was here, they used it coming this way.
So, maybe you should be trying that now, and testing it out before you actually, well, configure this.
I have a question.
I have a real objection to the figures I've projected.
To the field location?
Right, that's a big thing, yeah.
So I think the connection's not bad.
Basically, where the field, the field school is, in between where the library parking is and the case estates. And then you extended the parking between the field school and the community center down, so you increased your queuing.
Have you heard of that again?
There's a, it's a bar, it's a great chain of about eight or ten feet long, around the field there, so you don't have enough space to do that.
It's a lot, I mean, we could look at that in terms of the bar there, without me adjusting the soccer field. The soccer field is pretty shoehorned in there, between the library parking lot, the community center, and the block top on the right.
And I'm not sure that the field would be in the right orientation, but if it were, you'd be able to increase the parking between the field school and, and the community center, so you could increase your queuing.
Yes, we have to solve, whatever we do, we have to solve this problem, as, as in not, never eradicate, making sure it doesn't.
Why don't you, we won't get there tonight.
No, we won't get to parents to take the, we can't understand the message either, so.
We understand the message.
Scheduled site walk, what, what Tuesday would look good.
When would you guys be ready? We, like, some of this would have to be marked, right?
And we'd have to.
There's not a whole lot of change, personally, I think you could really.
You could follow it?
Yeah, you could definitely.
Even me, you know, I'm not gonna do that then.
Speaking of Jeff, I think we could, right?
All right, so.
Yeah, we can go back later and market more precisely.
Okay, yeah, back when I'm, when I'm totally confused, all right.
So, is it really possible?
But we wanna make sure that our traffic engineer can attend.
Yeah.
Well, he needs to look at the data first, before, before coming to the site walks, if it's possible to get to the data.
The problem is, is that the next three site visits, the next three Tuesdays, our scheduled site visits in there advertise.
That's up to what they.
That's up to May fifth.
So that's already after the.
Well, town meeting is eleven.
Just the week before.
I'm, I'm seriously ready to go out on a different date, if anybody's willing, because I think that this is a very important thing.
I would do a different day.
So.
This is a really big deal for me, to do an extra morning, by the way.
How's the Thursday?
Depends on the Thursday.
So, next week we have an advertised meeting at thirty-three Applecrest, which is an R G A.
Well, and the Thursday's open.
Boston Post Road, so we could meet before that or after that.
And why don't we just do another morning?
Do another morning, because this is gonna take a lot of time, this is a lot of walking, and I don't wanna add this. How about the twenty-third, everybody want the twenty-third maybe?
Twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Yeah, any of those?
Whatever works.
And that way, do we give our traffic consultant leeway?
The twenty-third to.
That's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, next week.
It shouldn't be during school vacation, if you wanna see this in action.
You want to see it in action.
Pretty much, I know it looks like an action.
School vacation.
Because if you wanna see it in action, there's just two.
At this point, you know.
Well, those are the worst.
Let's just go.
Yeah, I mean, why throw an extra?
Yeah, that would be for the traffic control back here.
I, I believe you, that the, you know, we have, somebody can, we can all drive out and take a look at that, at how crazy it is. So, if, if we have to schedule it in school vacation week, that's fine. So, if, if we have to schedule it in school vacation week, that's fine, as long as we schedule it with enough time for us to process what we're, what we're looking at, and hopefully maybe come to some, some consensus as to what, what we're gonna say at town meeting. So, what date?
Okay, so, Tuesday, it could be the 22nd or the 23rd.
Wednesday or Thursday? Anyone have any preferences?
I'm fine with all of the different ones.
Yeah, okay.
You got it.
Other day's okay with me.
David?
It's okay with that, but either one.
Are you all gonna be there? Either day is okay with all of you?
Okay, what time, what time are they used to do these?
We do these at 8:00 AM.
Okay, so, what do you want, what do you wanna do? Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday's Thursday.
Your call.
Well, this is anti-Thursday.
It's anti-Thursday, we don't have a meeting.
Thursday, Thursday?
Thursday's better, all right. And we'll be meeting at...
Bobby Show has to get the information there for...
We're at Field School.
Till later than Friday.
Okay.
I mean, at the back, the case house, only at the case house as a starting point.
Okay.
Or information?
Traffic information. Is there traffic?
It's in pieces, you know, it's not assembled as a full package yet.
Well, and keep in mind, keep in mind, it was also the traffic counts were done when that roadway was closed, you know? There must be projections. Are people making predictions, or are we just...
It was a traffic count, you know, in strategic places.
Is, has, somebody done a study of how the traffic is supposed to behave when this is all set up the way it's supposed to be running? Has somebody done, is that modeling?
You're modeling?
I'm... You haven't modeled it?
Not in the proposed edition.
I thought you said you had a traffic engineer...
He's working on it.
When is he gonna be finished with it? Is he doing a model on how the traffic is supposed to operate with, once all this is done?
You don't know?
I guess I'm not, I just don't wanna answer something that I'm not sure of.
Yeah, obviously.
I mean, that's a critical piece of the puzzle.
If we do all this, we'd like to know if it worked, or hopefully it worked.
So, do we have any idea of volumes of people driving in?
Yeah, they have councils.
They have councils, but they don't have, they don't have modeling. Modeling, they don't know how it's all gonna hold on.
There's still modeling on this, I don't think we've got, I don't think you're ready.
Yeah, no.
So, the sidewalk can only have value if you can also visit traffic.
Yeah, that's what this is about.
Yeah, okay.
It's about traffic and parking and the circulation.
It's a shot in the dark, I wouldn't do it, I mean...
Well...
Not, not with the idea of this is gonna fix, I wouldn't even mention the queuing.
Well, we don't have, that's the problem, that's, okay, that's just one of the big little ones. It's crazy. Yeah, okay.
Why don't we question it?
The other challenge is the law, removing permanent services, and, you know, modernizing the roadways a little bit, it's not bad, but, you know, if you're, you're gonna have to be able to answer that question, if you're gonna have to connect it.
The one thing I wanna just go back to, the other lot are essentially places where it's a queuing park, and the traffic happens today except for the one connected in the lane. So, the new piece, the whole new piece is putting that queue on that roadway.
Gives us...
That's the new one.
And, what we're saying is, is there are apparently problems that need to be addressed. There's a proposal for how to address those problems. How do we know, number one, what the problems really are, and number two, how the, how the modifications will address those problems? Other than just anecdotal information?
But, but the, the issue I'm having a little trouble with is, we know, we know what the queue was before with the old building, and it was in the same territory that this queue, we just had it in the other direction, so...
Do you understand, he understands what we're talking about. We, we need to know, you, you're gonna be making predictions, you're making a whole master plan here, that's meant to address a set of problems. How do you know that the fixes that you're introducing will actually fix the problems? That's, that, that's where the model comes in that we're asking for.
And they weren't coming in three different directions for the old Field School either, so it's not just a question of reversing what was there before, or...